All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to mute this person. Caller one, I'm going to mute you and then I'll unmute you during public comment, just to make sure you have a chance to speak. All right. I'm going to call our Monday, June 14th, Council meeting to order. Alyssa, will you please take the role?
Cash?
Here.
Wend?
Here.
Ritten?
Here.
Barf?
Here.
Litt?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Schmidt? Wetzel?
Here.
Romline?
Here.
Thank you, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. The next item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from June 1st. Comments or corrections on those minutes? All right, very good. Next is comments and suggestions from citizens present. We have a few this evening. If you would please, when I call your name, just come up to the microphone and state your name and address. Our first is Charles Smith.
Okay, I'm here to call then. My name is Charles.
Just come to the microphone, Mr. Smith. Actually, or we can get the microphone to you, too.
Yeah, my name is Charles Smith. I live at 201 Saltwater Street, across from 210 Water Street. And I'm here to voice my opinion, complain about the noise that's going on across the street. They had a boxing match there Saturday. I understand there was more than 200 people there. And the week before, there was a party there. I called the police and the dispatcher said they could play music until after 10 o'clock. All they did, they played a little after 10. But getting back to this boxing thing, I live on a corner, so I can see across the street, and I can see down the street, further south. There were cars parked by the park. There's a little park down there. There's no parking. There's cars parked there. Further down, there's a little driveway that goes through the dam. There's a sign there that says "No Parking", because sometimes the guys go in there, whatever they do. Well, somebody was parked there. And it's not only the noise that I heard, it felt like I was at a boxing match. And then there was a loudspeaker, and once in a while, there was a drum. And it's not only that, but when everything is done after 10 o'clock, then everybody comes out. They're screaming, the women are screaming, the guys are loud. They're slamming car doors. They get in their cars, some of them squeal their wheels. And then there's two motorcycles that were right outside my apartment. They start up the motorcycles, and they didn't go anyplace. They just kept revving it up, revving it up, revving. Finally, they took off. Then they, ah, loud. And I moved here five years ago. And I went across to that mart, and at the time, there was a resale shop there. There was a flower shop and a beauty parlor. And further down, some restaurants came in there after I had moved there. There was a total of five restaurants there. And I was into a couple of them, but they just couldn't make it there. They were nice restaurants, except one of them, which was the same as now, loud music and that. We had to call the police, and I do have to compliment the police that came over. I went down and get the police reports. Couple officers came over there and talked to them. They quieted down. And 20 minutes later, after the police left, here they were again. So I called the police again. And one of the police went inside, and he wrote in his report that the floor was actually vibrating. Well, they're not here anymore. That restaurant's gone. So this outfit here moved in. They got the whole building now. And we have to listen to that noise every Saturday. And outside of that, I just wonder, I was watching when they, they didn't bulldoze it, I guess, but they tore up the back of the building there. I think it was maybe a front end loader. No, I don't even know if they got a permit for doing that. Another thing, there was something else I was going to say. Yeah, why would he even allow something like that here? A boxing bout is a predominantly residential area. This building is the only business there. Why is that even allowed, you know? To have that kind of thing there? And I don't know if the people that live in back of that are complaining about it. I would. It's their backyard. So, and another thing, I don't know. There was a report that there is 200 people there. I don't know if you're even allowed that many people in that building, you know? And then even after, like I said, when it's over, they slam their doors and that. But a lot of the people go to the other end, to the bar. And last, not the boxing bouts, but the week before, 2:30 in the morning, I woke up and, or actually, I woke up at 2:00, they're playing music back in there. So the whole thing is just, I don't know what to say, you know? But that's all I got to say, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome.
The next person is Jerry Bauer.
Hi, I'm Jerry Bauer. I live at 201 Saltwater Street. As Chuck Keyes down on the second floor? I'm on the fifth floor. I'm on the top. And I'm right smack dab in the middle of the street side. And I hear it directly, because I'm right in that little alleyway between those two buildings. And I hear it on a weekly basis, and it's absolutely horrible. It, that, I was going to let this go till next month, but after that boxing event Saturday night, I did it. And I can't take it no more. My health was starting to be affected last year when they came in. I came to the council meeting last August and asked for something to be done then. And I was told that somebody would get back to me. I didn't think it would take another phone call and email last week, and then getting back to me. The city person, clerk, got back to me today and told me that, reminded me that August of last year was when that city council meeting was. And I said, you know, I said, "In there, didn't it say that I was supposed to get a follow-up call or something?" And she said, "Yeah." And I said, "Well, I'm still waiting." And so an email went out to the building commission, somebody, planning commission, and within five minutes, I got my phone call. Took a while. But I said, "Well," I said, "nothing's changed. More music, louder than anything. The vibrations, still knocking stuff off people's walls. We're across the street." And I had officer come to my apartment. I said, "You're not going to believe me until somebody actually physically comes to my apartment. We're willing anybody. You're invited to come to our apartments. Sit in our living room, listen to what we listen to on a weekly basis. You're not going to believe it." And he did. He came to my apartment. He stood in my living room. My patio door was closed. My TV was on. What I have my volume at, I shouldn't have it any louder. My volume is between 25 and 30. Plenty, loud enough for me to listen to what I have to on my TV. I should not have to turn it to 54, just outdo that music across the street. Way too loud. I would have ear things on just to listen to that 54. Good Lord. Unacceptable. I should not have to have my windows and my doors closed and have to do that on a weekly basis when I want to enjoy the beautiful weather outside. I don't want my paying my electric bill in the hundreds of dollars worth just because I have to do that just to live? Unacceptable. And it's not only me, it's my other residents, my neighbors. Our walls are vibrating from the vibration from the bass player being so damn loud. Turn it down, good Lord. I can't imagine what the decibel meter is out. That boxing thing, I turned on my decibel app, 70. And I didn't have anything on in my living room. 70. Can imagine what it would be if I opened up my patio door. I had nothing on. I wasn't doing nothing, and it was at 70, just for a boxing thing. I haven't even turned it on and listened to it when there's a live music event going on. It's unbearable. The officer did his body cam thing. That should be proof enough. I've done, like they've asked, I've done the videotaping after 10 o'clock, when it's supposed to be quiet over there, no noise. Plenty of noise going on after 10 o'clock. Music playing after 10 o'clock. The boxing thing went on well after 10 o'clock. The music on the inside, it's, something's got to be done. If we're going to, if that business is going to stay there, we need to compromise. They need to turn it down. Turn it down. The neighbors that I've talked to, that I got the signatures from, I feel sorry for the family that wants to move from their home. That is, their fenced yard is bucked, butt up right up to theirs. A three-month-old and a four-year-old can't even sleep at night on a weekend. Can't even enjoy playing out in the backyard at night because of the music, unloud. And the neighbor next to them, family too, can't do anything. We've already had two people move in the neighborhood already because of this. And we got people in our apartment that are ready to leave in July, all because of this. We, if we're going to compromise, and they're going to save business, at least turn it down and put insulation in, whatever they have to do. Sound barrier yourself, I don't know. I enjoy the music, too, but not that loud. Not that it's hurting our well-being in our neighborhood. The announcer from Saturday, they could hear it over on Church Street. And our neighbor told me, she goes, when she called, her friend called her and says, "I can't imagine what it's like being right next door. I heard it on Church Street." That's two, three blocks up. Good Lord. I'm going to continue to get signatures from the neighborhood. It's been so hot, and my health is not the greatest to be walking around getting this, but I will. I will continue to get whatever signatures and how many ever I need to do until this stops or they get out, one or the other. It was peaceful and quiet long before I moved in. They came in after me. And I'm not going to tolerate it no more. Whatever it takes, it's either they compromise down to our level and stop interrupting our living arrangements and our well-being and our health, or they get out and move. It's one or the other.
Thank you, Jerry. Next is Anita.
I'm Anita Akamur, and I live in apartment 304, across from 210. And my apartment faces Spain and water. I'm on the corner, and I'm up on third floor. And I'm a person where I got a little bit of hard hearing, and my bedroom is across from that building. And I have to put my oscillating fan on in order for me to go to sleep, because you've got to drown out that noise of the music. And when they had that fighting match this weekend, I was ready where I was going to open, I shouldn't say this, where I was ready to open up the window and dump a bucket of water on somebody, whoever was revving that motorcycle. It just kept on and on and on, and I just couldn't take it no more. I ended up getting out of bed, going in the living room, in the recliner, and I still couldn't sleep. And I do have a health problem. And I am moving out in July, a year from now, because I can't cope with it. So I wish something has to be done. And we also have problems where they're, when they do have a gathering, they're using our parking lot sometimes. Not all the time, sometimes. And I have opened up the window a couple times and told them that they have to remove their vehicles. And I did it politely. They answer me politely, but they do remove their vehicles. So something has to be done about that parking around there also. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last one before I'll open it up to anyone virtually is Madeline Weider.
Madeline Weider. You can probably guess I also live at the Globe. I live on the top floor, apartment 506. I'm not here to try to shut down a business. I understand it's difficult for businesses, especially right now. And I understand that live music is quite a draw. But, good grief. It's awful across the street. The music is so, so loud. Like, you know, as Jerry mentioned, if we want to watch TV, it's got to be turned way the heck up. We can't enjoy our summer evenings. We can't have our balcony doors open or go out and sit out there. And the base is vibrating. I mean, things are vibrating on the walls. The patio doors are vibrating. There are people, a lot of people, in our building who have health conditions. Gee, I'm one of them. We need, we need to be able to sleep. And we need to be able to sleep earlier than 10 o'clock. And I know there's a 10 o'clock cutoff, but there's also a part of a city ordinance where it says something else, right? And there's no 10 o'clock cutoff? It's in there. Okay. But there's also part of the, okay, deep in an ordinance, we found it. Jerry's got it. Like I said, I just want to compromise. You know, a band doesn't always have to play at full volume. They've got a small space down there. Heck, they could play at an eighth volume of what they do now. And that space, everyone down there would definitely have a nice time, and it would still be loud down there, but it wouldn't be rattling stuff off our walls. I would invite you all to come to my apartment on a weekend night when they've got the live music over there. And every one of you, heck, I'll buy drinks and put out snacks. It's, there's got to be something done. And like I said, I'm not here to put anybody out of business, but we need to work something out. We need to be able to work with the business across the street. And I hope they're willing to compromise and work with us as well. Thank you.
And I'm going to go to the two virtual, and then I'll come back. And then there also is an opportunity at the end of our meetings as well. So I'm going to unmute both the callers online. So caller one and caller two, you're both unmuted. If either one of you would like to comment, please let me know. Okay, hold on one second, caller two. I'm going to turn you up, and then we'll... Caller two? Would anyone online like to comment? Okay. I'm going to mute both of you again. There is an opportunity to comment at the end of our meeting. If for some reason you would like to do that, please just put your name in the chat or hang on, and I will make sure to unmute you at the end of the meeting as well. The last call for anyone virtually? All right. Go ahead, Jerry.
There's one person that was going to come, didn't come. One of her concerns is beside the noise. Her apartment is on the entrance of the bar. And her concern is people come out of the entrance there and congregate and have the conversations, loud conversations, and do a lot of smoking right there. And that affects her, I'm sure some of the apartments down below, too. And they're very loud. And she sometimes has to shut out the window to calm it down. And she's called the police and stuff like that on several occasions. But she would ask that a designated area be moved someplace away from the main entrance, maybe out in that back terrace where they are. It's outside. Mine's to move a smoking area out back there instead of that main entrance, because it is small, it is out by the street. That's all she was asking to do, if they can just move that smoking area away from our building. Because it is such a small entrance, and a lot of people congregate out there. There have been drinking and stuff like that. Some of them bring their drinks out there, and they're probably not supposed to, but they do it anyhow, and they're smoking. And just loud, loud conversations, and that interferes, interrupts stuff, too. So that's what she would want to add.
Thank you. Okay. I don't have any other pink slips. There is an opportunity to comment at the end of our meeting. So if you'd like to do that, please stick around for the end. We do not have any public hearings. Committee reports, there's the Finance Committee of June 7th, the Plan Commission for May 24th, and Public Works Commission from June 8th. Does anyone have comments on any of those? All right. We have no old business. Our next item is Communications and Recommendations. The first is employee recognition. And I told the chief that every time we have a firefighter here, you guys get called out. I'm batting a thousand. So, oh, there they are. Well, at least two of them. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to do Kevin first, and then, or they never come, not coming back anytime soon? Okay. So we'll do Kevin, and then we'll do Battalion Chief Buzin. So before I ask Kevin to come up, we do have three employees we're identifying for recognition in June. Dan Schultz from the Water Waste Water for 30 years, Chad Buzin from the Fire Department for 20, and Kevin Shuffel from the Library for five years. And we have two of them with us this evening. So Kevin, and Peg, if you'd like, if you would join me. You guys can step over here.
I've said this before, I always really appreciate the opportunity to have these, because I love seeing what department heads and leadership team writes. And Kevin, I have to say, without knowing you a lot, this is what I would completely expect. So Peg writes for us. I'm not sure how many times in the day the library staff says, "Hey, Kevin." Because we all turn to Kevin for help for many things. "Hey, Kevin, can you help set up the program in Meeting Room 1? Spread salt in front of the library? Move boxes of books to the correct department? Chase down the bat inside the building? Clean up a spill?" And the list goes on and on. "We're so fortunate that Kevin joined the library team five years ago. He brought the essential skills and knowledge needed for building maintenance, and his friendly personality was a perfect fit for interacting with staff, the library patrons, and other city team members. Kevin has been an important contributor to our construction project. He provides another set of eyes on the project and interacts with the project superintendent on a daily basis and the other subcontractors as needed. The entire library team congratulates Kevin on his five-year anniversary. And as an added extra perk, Kevin's wife is an excellent cook and seamstress, who shares her talents with the library staff." And, you know, I'll just share, I, the library, in a lot of ways, runs quite independently. But, and I try to know all of our city team. And you're someone that stuck out from the beginning. It's because Peg would always say, "Oh, Kevin can handle that. Oh, Kevin's got that. Kevin can do that." So I appreciate your service to our community, especially during this last year, especially during the last three weeks, as we shut down and moved an entire library. It's without a doubt, we would not be in the position we are without you, Kevin. So thank you so much for your contribution to our city. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. I'm going to invite up Chad Buzin and Chief Befeld, and anyone else? All right, very good. So Chief Befeld's going to do the speaking this time. And I'll finish it off.
There you go. I was going through and looking at this, and I said, "Wow, 20 years. That's a, that's a long time now, where you have somebody that's actually staying here at a department and putting so much knowledge into this." Just knowing Chad, this is something that has always been his passion, from a very young age, when he'd go down to the fire station with his dad to actually being part of a third generation. His dad, him, and his son now are all in the fire service all at the same time. At Waterloo, the son is also in Fitch, or not Fitch, Azureton. And Chad started this at an early age. He had a deep passion for the fire service and still continuously works hard every day to hone his skills and that of others. Chad got in the fire service as a volunteer in Waterloo and came on board as a paid-on-call member in Watertown. He was hired 20 years ago. And a little bit after that, he was promoted to lieutenant at the Watertown Fire Department. In 2012, he was promoted to shift commander and served as the department's training, or fire train officer. Chad knows how dangerous this profession is and has a goal to have all members trained to a higher level. Chad is the leader in the department. He is an aggressive, critical thinker, who is ready to take on tasks, works with the crews, and uses praise and discipline when warranted. I believe one of Chad's goals is not to be perfect, because he knows we must keep on training and all that we do, but his goal is to get better each day. I look at, when I look at Chad, he can be a friend. He's a confident. He's a mentor. He's a leader. He's a city servant. He's a great asset to the Watertown Fire Department and the city of Watertown. Chad is who you think of as someone as a firefighter, well-trained, ready to respond, and willing to put his life on the line to save others. If you are ever in trouble, your house is on fire, or if you need someone to rescue, you or a loved one. Chad is the person that you would like to see on that emergency scene, as he'll get it accomplished. I say thank you, Chad, for your years of service to our community and our department.
I don't really know how I'm going to top that, except to say, it was really important to me that the fire department knew how much I appreciated them and how much I value the work that they do. And you were so kind to me right away. And you were willing to teach me and listen to me and listen to my ridiculous questions and hear my clanking heels down your fire department while a hallway is... And you've always just been so generous in sharing your knowledge and your kindness. So I don't know all of that. Well, I know it now. I didn't know it then. But I can tell you guys, we're fortunate to have Chad here with us. So congratulations, Chad, on 20 years of serving us in this community. We should be thanking you guys more often than we do. So I'll step over to this side.
We'll smile for a photo. We'll clap again. All right. Our next item, not quite as jazzy, is our poll worker appointments. Is there a motion to approve these?
So move.
Motion by Cash?
I'll second that.
Second by Ritten? Are you fine with a voice vote on that one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next, our committee appointments. We'd seek a motion on those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. I'll take a motion by one and a second by like. Thank you. Comments on these? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. I wanted to provide you all an update on the Plaza and the Seawall. Tomorrow morning, the City Engineer or the Public Works Director and I will be attending the Main Street Board to provide a more complete update. So Melissa's getting...
So Melissa's getting a little precursor to the information we're sharing tomorrow. But as you all likely recall, we have been working on the issue with the plaza. So just to level set, if you're at the Old Two Rivers Fisher Building and you look across the river, so it would be, or if you're at the town square and you look to the east, the area's been fenced off since about 2019. So in 2019, we noticed a hole in the northmost metal bin of the seawall. We instantly hired MSA to start kind of costing out the repair to the northernmost bin. We received those quotes back for one bin at $165,000 and four bins at $385,000. And knowing, as you all do, that we don't just pull that type of money out of thin air, we began to prepare the 2021 budget for at least the one bin that we knew was in complete disrepair. In that time in 2020, we noticed a bulge in the west wall of the plaza. So we contacted our structural engineer, Ayers, and they did an assessment of the plaza and then the southwest corner of the Main Street Bridge girders. After that visit with Ayers, the plaza was closed because it was unsafe, and that also led to closing a portion of the Riverwalk. So we spent some time coming up with, internally coming up with different options, everything from do nothing and let nature take its course to a temporary repair, to demoing, and redesigning and raising. So we took that to Public Works, and the recommendation from Public Works was to raise the plaza that was deemed the most economic solution and considering the investment we're making at the square, also the most logical, I suppose you could say. So engineering again reached out to Ayers to get a quote. We did that in March. And then in winter and spring, I can tell you, they spent a lot of time looking for grants that could help fund this. I know some of the alderpeople sent us grants, and we hunted all those down, and we were not successful or not eligible in those applications. So we then went back to Ayers to get a quote to essentially attempt to get this work done in 2021 instead of 2022 because the grants would have lined up with 22. And we have since asked Ayers to move up their October 21 deadline to August. We do have some high-level costs at this point in time. And I will share these costs with you, knowing that they do not include any of our own staff labor. So there's the potentiality that our team could do some of this work. It depends on the street reconstruction progress. So obviously, we can't pull them off of the annual street work in order to accommodate this work. But right now, there's a couple of proposals in phasing. Overall, the project without a contingent would cost $524,000. With a contingent, and we typically, at this early stage, plan a 20% contingent that may get dwindled down, but we start there. We're at just under $630,000. So what you all will be seeing soon are a couple of resolutions for your consideration that would unrestrict some funds. So we have the budgeted $165,000 that we plan to replace the seawall bin. We have a reserve capital account that is just under $94,000, and that is from the Carriage Hill use path. So we did some of our own labor rather than contracting out, but we were reimbursed for that, so we have that there. We have $100,000 in a downtown Main Street improvement reserve account, and that brings it to just under $360,000. So the other item that we do have the potentiality to consider is we borrowed $225,000 for the reconstruction of the runway at the airport. And because of the progress of the project with the state, that will not occur this year. So we were going to borrow $225, we did this year, and then it's on the capital plan for $225,000 next year. So since that's bumped out, we've already borrowed that money, we could have the potentiality to use that $225,000. So you all will have those put before you for consideration, but I know you, many of you haven't had unrestricted fund requests before, so I wanted to give you a little precursor to what you were considering. If you're doing the math, which I know one of you is jotting these all down, the number comes to, if that all would be available and approved, just over $584,000. So we're in the ballpark to get the work complete. Obviously, contingent is what contingent is. And the, the airport funds were borrowed. The downtown Main Street improvement was from the closure of Tid 3, the Carriage Hill path I already explained, and then we borrowed the $165,000 for the seawall. So what we'll be doing is, as I started this, is making a presentation tomorrow to the Main Street Board, they were curious. The design that's being put forward would, as we talked about with the blessing of Public Works, would demolish the plaza and essentially redesign that parking lot right behind the First Street buildings. And it would essentially send the Riverwalk through the parking lot onto the sidewalk and then onto Main Street. So rather than running down the plaza as it traditionally does, it would take a bit of a detour. So I wanted you all to hear it before I present it to this body tomorrow and then to give you just a little bit of a precursor on what will be coming your way and the way of requesting those funds be unrestricted. Okay? Jane Ellen, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that's a really good representation of where we stand in the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything on that one? All right, let's go on then. We have no new business. Next is the accounts payable.
Madam Chairman, would you please pay the accounts?
I will pay them. Motion by Romline, second by Wetzel. Comments? Go ahead, Alyssa. Romline?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wen?
Aye.
Written?
Upstand.
Bart?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
All right, next is reports on miscellaneous business. You have the Board of Review from June 2nd, Committee of the Whole of June 1st, Historic Preservation and Downtown Design Commission from May 19th, the Licensing Board of June 9th, the Main Street Program of May 18th, Park Recreation and Forestry from May 3rd, the Payroll Summary of May 19th to June 1st, and Tourism Commission from May 13th and June 10th. Anyone have anything on any of those minutes? All right, wonderful. Our next is licenses. And you'll see we have a lot of them, and they all have to be taken individually, but we're fine on voice voting them. So we're going to get into a bit of a cadence. I would encourage us to take turns and make motions. Or just two people keep doing it and it'll go even faster. No, I'm just kidding. Okay. So the first is an application for a Class B malt and liquor license. This is for Amato's Jr. LLC doing business as Amato's Jr. at 403 East Main.
So moved.
Motion by Pash, second by Wagner. Comments or questions on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next is an application for a Class B malt liquor license for M1027D LLC doing business as the Dew Drop at 1027 North 4th. Sivico Buzzdom is the agent.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Went. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Written. Comments?
Mayor, I do have a question. As it relates to, I think, what's publicly knowledgeable about some of the challenges that the ownership of the Dew Drop and the former establishment on Lebanon, is this the same ownership or are they under new ownership?
Can't answer that.
We, we don't know that? And I don't know our position as a city, if we need to evaluate. I mean, obviously, the charges weighed against them are pretty severe. And is there any implications about our position on continuing licensing an establishment that's facing these allegations?
I'm going to look at the chief, the clerk, or the city attorney. Chief, you got anything on that one?
And there's been no historical challenges at that location in terms of compliance? Okay. This felt as worthy of a question.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next is an application for a Class B malt liquor for Watertown Hospitality Limited Partnership doing business as the Best Western. Eric Gunwood is the agent.
I'll move for that.
Motion by Romline?
Second.
Second by Wagner. Comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next is an application for a Class B malt liquor for Jacob Lee LLC doing business as Stacy's at 501 North 4th. Jacob Lynch is the agent.
So moved.
Motion by Pash, second by Bart. Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? My second meeting with your baby. So congratulations. Next is an application for a Class B license for the Fourth Annual Downtown Watertown Craft Beer Walk at various locations on July 22nd from 5:00 to 8:00.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pash, second by Wagner. Comments or questions on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next is an application for the outdoor open container entertainment event permit for the Chamber of Commerce 100th Anniversary Celebration on June 26th with the conditions as set by the Licensing Board.
I'll move that.
Motion by Romline?
Second.
Second by Wagner. Comments on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next is also an application for amendment to the temporary Class B license for the Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce 100th Anniversary Celebration on June 26th. This is to request a change to the premise with the conditions set by the Licensing Board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Wagner?
I'll second.
Second by Went? Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next is an application for a permanent premise amendment for Local Waters at 109 South 3rd for a permanent outdoor seating area pursuant to the CSM that was submitted with the application that's contingent upon the approval of the lease of the spaces, and that's later in the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Wagner?
Second.
Second by Pash. Comments from anybody?
Mayor, are we, how many parking spaces are we giving?
So we'll do, three.
Okay.
But we'll just, that lease is in our resolution section.
Okay.
Anyone else on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the next is an application for a temporary premise amendment for the Draft De Cellar at 110 South 3rd on Thursday, the 22nd of July from 7:00 to 10:00 with conditions set by the Licensing Board.
So moved.
Motion by Romline?
Second.
Second. Pash?
Yep.
You guys really took me literally. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next is the application for a temporary premise amendment for the Draft De Cellar at 110 South 3rd for Sunday, July 4th, room 1 to 5, again with the conditions set by the Licensing Board.
Make the motion.
Motion by Bart, second by Wagner. Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Next is the application for a temporary premise amendment for Rosati's at 1907 Market Way on Thursday, July 15th. This is from 4:00 to 8:00, again with conditions as set by the Licensing Board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Wagner? Second by Bart. Any comments on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next is an application for a temporary premise amendment for Run and Erans at 700 North 4th for July 3rd from 10:00 to 6:00 with the conditions set by the Licensing Board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Went? Second by Bart. Anybody on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is the application for the temporary premise amendment for Run and Erans at 700 North 4th for July 31st from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., again with the conditions by the Licensing Board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Went? Second by Romline. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next is the application for the Class B malt and Class B wine license for the American Legion on the 4th of July celebration at Riverside Park for July 3rd and 4th.
Make that motion.
Motion by Wagner? Second by Bart. Anybody on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next is our applications for license renewals. These are Exhibit A, but we will take them item by item, correct? You can take the whole exhibit? Okay. Lovely. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pash, second by Wagner. And just for the minutes, I should have read this as Class B combination malt and liquor, Class A malt, Class B malt, Class C wine, and Class A combination malt and liquor. Anybody have comments or questions on any of these?
Just curious, I don't know if this can be answered, but Class A liquor for the Chic Boutique, what is that, what is that comprised of?
They should be Class A.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what Class A is. Is that?
Class A is to be sold in original packages away from, to be consumed away from the business.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next is the application for the license renewals of secondhand article and jewelry dealer licenses. This is Exhibit B.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Went? Second by Bart. Comments or questions? No one's going to ask about the ATMs? I mean, I always did. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I just was curious always why we did it, but I got a lesson my first time around. All right, good job, you guys. We made it through that marathon. Our next is ordinances. The first is ordinance 21-26, this is to, excuse me, amend Section 428-7G Special Events of Chapter 428 Public Events, Article 2. This is from me and the Licensing Board on the first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Went? Second by Licked. Comments or questions on this one? Housekeeping.
This is just changing language.
Yep, just housekeeping. All right, Alyssa? Went?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Romline?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Next is ordinance 21-27. This is to amend Section 500-6, Part A, Part 2, no parking in loading zones to include additional spaces on Joan Street and loading zones to include additional spaces on Jones Street in our general code. This is here from Alderman Romline and Public Safety and Welfare on the first reading.
Make a motion.
Motion by Wetzel, second by Romline. Comments or questions? Mr. Bart?
Is this for like the food pantry?
Not to my knowledge.
What is this loading zone?
It's for the handicapped person.
The handicapped is for?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have anything to add?
That's what I was going to add. Handicapped that gets picked up by.
City taxis a lot.
Oh, yeah. Alyssa? Wetzel?
Aye.
Romline?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wen?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Next is ordinance 21-28. This is to amend section 500-4C Yield Right-of-Way Intersections of Chapter 500 of our traffic code. This is again here from Alderman Romline and Public Safety and Welfare on its first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Went?
I'll second that.
Second by Written. Comments or questions on this one?
What is this entailing?
Anyone that was there want to speak to it? Chief? Anybody?
This is over by Mark Bart Village and there's a kind of a different intersection now there since they've remodeled some of the streets and added different buildings. So, it's just adding a yield sign in that area.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Stumped me on that one. Anybody else? Alyssa?
Wen?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Romline?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
All right. Next is ordinance 21-29. This is to amend and add to 500-A, print 8, heavy traffic routes in our, in, of the city Watertown general code. This is here from Alderman Romline, Public Safety and Welfare on the first reading. Motion by Romline?
Second.
Ooh. Second by Went. Comments? Questions?
This is just adding Dodge Street from First to Third as a heavy truck route for the 7-Up trucks in that area.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alyssa?
Romline?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wen?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Our next is resolutions. We have exhibit 9228. This is a resolution for the 2021 private lead service lateral replacement contract 6-21. There should be a new one. The sponsor is Alderman Wetzel and Public Works.
Madam Mayor, I'll move for that.
Motion by Romline, second by Lick. Any comments or questions on this one? Alyssa? Romline?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wen?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Next is exhibit 9229. This is a resolution to approve the commercial real estate lease for three parking stalls at 302 Market Street for an outdoor patio between the city of Watertown and local waters. This is here from me and the finance committee.
Ms. Wagner, I'll make the motion to approve 9229.
Motion by Wagner, second by Bart. Comments or questions? Alyssa?
Wagner?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Romline?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wen?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Next is exhibit 9230. This is a resolution for change order number one to the contract with Ray's Daller Construction for the Interurban Trail head building. This is here from me and the finance committee.
I'll make a motion to approve exhibit 9230.
I'll second that.
Motion by Written, second by Wagner. Comments or questions on this one? Alyssa?
Written?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Romline?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wen?
Aye.
Next is exhibit 9231. This is a resolution to accept the American Rescue Plan Act funding and create a special, excuse me, a special revenue fund. This is here from me.
I'll make the motion to approve exhibit 9231.
Motion by Written, second by Lick. This is the paperwork we have to do in order to receive the federal funds from ARPA. Any other questions?
Just to clarify, Mayor, so, yeah, we're of course not deciding on any utilization of those funds. We're just accepting the receipt of said funds.
Yep. And then putting it into a reserve or special revenue fund.
Thank you. It's my understanding, not a lot of strings attached, just a couple of ways you're not supposed to use the money.
That's a very generous description. It's federal funding. There's always strings attached. There are some very hard boundaries, I would say, and then there's a lot of, a lot of uncharted gray area. So, but as I've shared with you all, our intention is to provide you an update. I think we have that scheduled for July. Alex and I are meeting next week on that final list. It is, to your point though, it is, there are some, some very strict no's, but there are a lot more yeses. It's just those yeses are so uncharted. It makes, it's almost an uncomfortable amount of gray area. But, Alex is our subject matter expert on it and we've got the rest of our city team contributing ideas. So, you guys will get those soon. I think we just received notice this week that the money is actually here now and going to be dispersed, I think, like maybe next week?
By the 25th.
By the 25th. So, this is good timing. We're, we're keeping a good pace with keeping up with it. Anybody else on this one? Let's take the roll. Written?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Romline?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wen?
Aye.
Right. And then our last resolution is exhibit 9232. This is a resolution to approve and reassign a facility use agreement with BRM Holdings for the WISDOT Transportation Economic Assistance Agreement Rail. The identification number is listed here as 36450050. This is here from me.
I'll move for 9232.
Motion by Romline, second by Wetzel. Comments or questions?
Mayor, would you give a brief summary of what this is? I know.
Jacob, you want to come up? I told Jacob to be ready.
I don't think anybody probably really understands what we're proving. So, I think it's prudent.
No. You know, it took me a few reads and a few explanations. So, I expected the question. So thankfully Jacob is well prepared.
All right. We also have Mr. Schrader here if we have any further questions. In 2014, the city of Watertown applied for a T grant. As part of the T grant, it's a transportation economic assistance grant. It funded the rail spur, but it was a pass-through grant to the private sector. So, the state paid the city to go pay, or it went through the city to pay Baker Rollman to, to do the spur. As part of that, there was the facility use agreement which was approved in 2014 as well. And as part of that, Baker Rollman has recently sold. So, the new owner would then take on the facility, this facility agreement with, in, instead of Baker Rollman. And this has to, it requires our signature to sign off of it. It also requires the DOT signature on it. So, it's been reviewed by the DOT. I believe they actually got most of the language from the DOT in the facility use agreement for this amendment. They're just, in order to facilitate the sale and continue the, because every year we have to report the number of cars that go on to, that use the spur. And there was also a jobs portion to it, but that does not, that liability of having a job by 20, June 2022 doesn't go with the new property owner. So, they're kind of off the hook now. So, had, the previous Baker Rollman had not met that standard, we would have been on the hook for $5,000 for every job not reached. From my understanding, as it's written now, as it's written, we would not be on the hook for that if they do not meet the job guarantee standards by June of 2022.
And I think that the impetus here is the sale of the physical property, right? So, the, the building and the manufacturer will remain Baker Rollman. They'll continue operating. It's just the business was sold some months ago. The property is selling now. So, with that, we have to take this action. Anyone have any questions? Just kidding.
Just curious, unrelated, I guess. Does Claussen have the same kind of agreement then?
Claussen also has a T grant. That one predates me joining the city. So, I don't know the extent to what we, I'm, that one's been a long time. So, I'm sure that jobs guarantee portion has been met. It's just, again, we have to report even for Claussen in perpetuity, the number of rail cars that they use on their spurs.
Any other questions? Good job, Jacob.
Thank you.
Alyssa, are you fine with voice? Okay. All those, anybody else? I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Our next item then is comments and suggestions from citizens present. Would anyone like to comment on anything? I'm going to just unmute this caller just to make sure. Caller one, you're unmuted. Last call. If anyone would like to speak to anything?
I have a question.
You'll just have to come to the microphone and put your name and address. We can't do a whole lot of discussion here because it's not publicly noticed.
No, it's just, it's just a question.
Sure.
Madeline Weider. The, the business we were talking about before, the, what is it called now?
The bar lounge at, the bar.
Okay. On South Water Street there. How does half a square city block get zoned for business in the middle of residential area? How'd that happen?
So, we will, can I mean it this time, Jerry? Mr. Moss is in the room. He'll catch you after the meeting to answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
I really committed you to answering your question. All right. Anybody else on public comment? All right. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Wagner, second by Romline. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Thanks, everybody. Threw that faster than I thought.
No.